Hi, Brian. We have a hard stop at 6:45, so I just want to let you know, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Doesn't sound good.
Good evening. Tempe Union High School continues to social distance for safety of our community. Board members and executive teams are participating virtually, and this meeting is being streamed live on our YouTube. I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone. The time is now 5:15. Let the record show that we have four board members, three are virtual, and one in person. I would move that the governing board adopt the agenda. May I have a second?
Madam President, nice second.
Thank you so much for that, Vice President Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Do any board members want to go on executive session to discuss anything tonight on tonight's agenda? Looks like I see no answer yeses. Okay, so we're going to start the study session. We have Dr. Minnevo finishing his presentation before we ask any questions, okay? And when we ask questions, I'm gonna call one, we'll go 1-1-1, so we can get as much people to get answers as possible. All right, well, I'll pass over to Dr. Minnevo.
Sorry about that. Madam President, thank you. Vice President Garcia, members of the board, executive team members, principals who are out there listening, and also our community members, our families. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to this study session. I'm going to begin, and as President Hodge mentioned, there's a lot to share here. So we'll hold off for questions at the end, and this will be the first of likely several other presentations. So this is an ongoing process of monitoring the learning of our students. And in this particular instance, we are looking at a learning gap analysis. So I'm gonna go ahead and proceed. Part of this is as a result of my goal, but mainly it's something that we would be doing anyway. And for my superintendent's goal, the two goals that were agreed upon earlier in, I think, late August or September is that knowing that we had an unusual learning environment going on with the pandemic and that kind of a thing that we would need to take some deliberate time and effort to study where there may be some gaps in student learning. And again, this is something that we do ongoing throughout the year, but we're gonna put a little more detail and specificity to this particular goal. So for tonight, I want to first recognize Dr. Alexic. She is the Executive Director of Assessment, Accountability, and Research. And she is remarkable and pulls up a variety of data from a variety of sources. And so for this particular study session, she's been extraordinarily helpful, and I really appreciate that. And so has Mrs. Hilgers and her perspective on what we are doing at the sites with our content specialists, with our department leaders in teaching and learning. And then Dr. Wilson, our Associate Superintendent, who does a lot of the managing and climate pulse on our schools and our departments, and so I appreciate her assistance. And last but not least, our Dr. Gonzalez is the Executive Director for Leader Development. So these four individuals are a critical piece to our organization. So an overview, for starters, you know, we're gonna talk about why the need for a learning gap analysis. And I mentioned that a minute ago around the fact that we are in unusual times. We are not in a typical learning, teaching, and learning environment for our teachers, nor for our students, for obvious reasons within this pandemic. And understanding that the entire country, world was thrust into this early on, back in March. We had to go into a virtual setting. We were thrust into it, quite frankly. So we're gonna look at what we can do better, what we learn from this. And that is the reason for the learning gap analysis, to see how we can help mitigate further loss with our students and have them along the way. And in a high school setting, it's real critical to pay attention to the credit gathering that our kids have to go through while they're here with us for the four years. We're gonna take a brief picture of the fourth quarter look at the data and what we, actually, what we were able to do during that time and what the Department of Ed allowed us to do. But looking at our virtual first quarter data, in second quarter, we were able to begin the second quarter in a hybrid model. And unfortunately, we were forced into a virtual setting several weeks ago. But we're gonna spend a lot of time with interventions, and that, those are the ongoing monitoring processes and systems that the schools have in place that we're really gonna look at carefully. And then next steps and planning, because it doesn't stop with this study session. It will continue on as we move forward in the school year and through the summer. So yeah, we are, we're concerned. We're very, very concerned. And as I mentioned, this is less than ideal situation for all school districts. Tempe Union is not alone. I have spoken with my colleagues in the sister districts of the East Valley and in Central Phoenix, and they're all struggling with this. Everybody is. So we're not unique to our little area of the town. We recognized there would be learning gaps and to begin addressing them sooner rather than later. And we have been doing that. It's ongoing. Our refocus is gonna be to our priority student groups, the freshmen and our seniors. And why the freshmen and the seniors, to maintain that trajectory for graduation for all students. But we want to focus on the freshmen and seniors. Seniors, because they have the rest of this semester and into second semester to make up any deficiencies or credits that they'll need to have for graduation day come in May. And our freshmen, we don't want, we want to start them off successfully as well and capture any or mitigate support for them early on so they don't get down the road in their junior and senior years and they're behind. And again, as I've mentioned, in a high school secondary-only system, we're always monitoring the capture of credits for all our students, but right now specifically for our seniors. And then again, to monitor and address the social, emotional needs of our students during this time. And if you recall, we did present in a study session the results from the CARE7, our social workers and our school support teams with the work that they've done. So we're continually monitoring that, and I don't want to lose sight of that either. So student achievement. And if I didn't mention that earlier, Dr. Alexic is gonna be presenting on the actual data slides. And so I can't see you, Dr. Alexic, but I know Mrs. Repi does. So the fourth quarter, before we go into that, as I mentioned, all of us were thrust into responding to this pandemic. Assignments and assessments were created to prioritize the essential standards and the performance objectives. And so what we try to do through teaching and learning and with our content specialists and department leaders is really focus on what our students need in terms of the essential standards and performance objectives as a priority. So the assignments were really narrowed and focused, which actually was a good thing. Because ADE provided us that guidance and latitude to hold students harmless during time, because no one, none of us had experienced this kind of an event as such as this pandemic. So we wanted to make sure that our students weren't held hostage or punitive in that manner. So we did everything for them to address access concerns. I think if you recall, we handed out, I think, over 2,000 laptops, and I don't know the exact number, but I think it may have been even more than that in the spring to our families who needed some access device to access work from home. And then with our teachers to say, let's be flexible with our grading practices and to prioritize opportunities that students are taking advantage of to improve their grades. And so we were thankful to the governor and to the state superintendent Hoffman of providing us some clear guidance and latitude to hold our students harmless. So first quarter of 2020 and '21, we began virtually. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Alexic. Are you there? Because I can't see you, but I can probably hear you.
I am here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Good. Well, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Minnevo, executive team. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. So the slide that you're looking at right now shows the district common assessment. This one is for English Language Arts for freshmen, and it displays the percent of students tested. The blue line is 2019, and then the orange line is 2020. So in 2019, we administered the district common assessments for the first time. It was an online administration, but it happened in school, in person. In 2020, we administered that same assessment, also online, but now it happened virtually. So students accessed the test at home. And even though, you know, the teachers provided support, there was a little bit more of a challenge in terms of logging in, because there were different computers being used, different Wi-Fi, problems with passwords, where there wasn't really an adults to help. But so you could see the distribution of the percent tested across each of the schools. Think we can move to the next slide. So this slide shows the percentage of students that were proficient in 2019. The change that happened in 2020 is that initially, when we administered this test in 2019, the plan was to give it to on-grade level students. And then the following year, we would bring in our honors level students. That was kind of our phased-in approach to introducing the common assessments. So we did that in 2020. We included honors level classes in administering the ELA9 test. So that's why you have three bars here. The first bar shows you students that took the test in 2019 on grade level. In 2020, the orange bar represents everyone that took the test, both on-grade level and honors. And then the gray bar represents just the on-grade level students, because we wanted to let you see the comparison between similar groups of students in 2019 and then in 2020. So you could see that across all sites and at district level, there was a decline in student performance. I do want to point out that these are freshmen. They have never been at our, they're new to our schools. They had taken this test at the end of quarter one. They were new to Schoology. They were new to School City. And they were asked to take this assessment, utilizing both of these tools at home, with a lot of guidance from teachers, but still with no direct adult support while they were taking that assessment. If you go to the next slide, this slide shows that data broken down by standard. So when we look at student performance on these common assessments, really focus on identifying if there are particular standards that our students struggle with and that might require some changes in our scope and sequence. So we wanted to see if there were things in this virtual environment that maybe students particularly struggled with that stood out. And so if you look at the data, there really isn't a standard that stands out as especially weak. Students tended to struggle with the same standards that they struggled in 1920. So we didn't really see a reason to make some significant changes to our scope and sequence based on this data. Next slide. This slide shows the data broken down by ethnicity. So this includes only on-grade level students, because we wanted to show you the comparison of how the data looks by ethnicity from 2019 to 2020. Some of the subgroups are very small, so if you look at that Pacific Islander, that includes less than 20 students in that category. So if you see big fluctuations in percent proficient, some of that is accounted for by the small group size. Okay, next slide. So this slide shows all three assessments. So we went into detail showing you ELA9, but we wanted to show you the other grade levels that we also administered the assessment to. And you'll see the three lines for 2020. We're actually three lines altogether. In 2019, again, it's only on-grade level students, and then in 20, you have everyone, and then just the on-grade level students. So if you'll notice, for ELA10, we really didn't see any decline in student performance. They tended to perform similar to how they did in 2019. ELA11 showed a decrease in performance. And we spent time with department leads examining this data. At ELA10, the way these standards are written, the grade band is 910 and then 1112. And so there's a kind of a jump in the rigor of the standards at ELA11. And so we're kind of looking at what are the things that students tended to struggle with in this progress report to kind of try to impact that for the final exam. This data shows student performance in 2019, '20, and then how they subsequently did the following year. So a student that took the ELA9 in 1920, we looked at how they performed on the ELA10 the following year. And so that middle group are students that shows you the percentage of students that are maintaining their level of performance. And really what that means is if a student was proficient in 1920, they remained proficient in 2021. If they were not proficient in 1920, they remained not proficient in 2021. So the majority of students fell in that maintaining category. They performed similarly like they did the year before. You'll see that we have about 15% of students that actually increased in performance. So they were not proficient in their ninth grade assessment and then became proficient on their 10th grade assessment. And then we have about 17% of students that decreased in performance. They were proficient on the ELA9, but then when they took the test the following year, they were not proficient. But the majority of students kind of maintained their status. This chart shows the breakdown of student grades for those that did not participate in the assessment. Because on the first slide, when you looked at the percentage of students that tested, there was a larger percentage of students that didn't participate in the assessment. So we wanted to see how they were performing in their classes and who were the students that we were missing. And so when we looked at their grades in the class that they were taking, you can see that the majority of students in the on-grade level courses received either a DF or an I and incomplete. The breakdown for honors isn't as clean as it is for on-grade level, so there's kind of a wider distribution, but there's still a high percentage of DNF students that are not participating in the assessment. So that indicated to us that students that are not participating in the assessment are most likely not participating in the course itself and not doing the assignments as well, which potentially leads them to that low D or F grade. This slide shows the correlation between how the student did on the performance assessment, on the common district assessment, and then how the subsequent grade that they got in that class. So a correlation greater than .7 would indicate a very strong correlation. Correlation between .7 and .5 would be considered kind of middle. And then a weak correlation is anything really below .5. So you'll see that these are all weak correlations, but they're also statistically significant. So there is a relationship between how a student does in the progress assessment and how they do in what grade they're getting in the class. We're really not surprised by the low level of correlation, because the grade encompasses a lot more measures of student learning and allows for a lot, kind of different demonstrations of learning. The assessment is really a one-time, 30-minute test on a select group of items. But so the correlation was, though, still statistically significant.
So I'm gonna interject something just quickly, and we may have discussion around it at the end. But Dr. Alexic, is it fair to say that those students that we do have record of participation or engagement, if you will, they actually learned during that first quarter and did a fairly adequate, or if not better than adequate, job on, in a virtual environment, at least in the first quarter?
Yes.
So if engaged, they actually learned. Their teachers were able to teach them, and they learned.
Right.
Right? Okay.
This slide shows the progress of students that are in the reading intervention, Read 180 program. So students that require, have some gaps in their reading skills and require additional scaffolding are enrolled in a reading class where they're utilizing the Read 180 program, which is an online tool that is really targeted to providing students practice with the goal of really increasing their reading level to become on-grade level. And so one of the key factors of the effectiveness of this program is that students are engaged in it and participating. And so we, students take an assessment at the beginning of the year, then one at the middle of the year, and then one at the end of the year. But in between that time, we really monitor their engagement in the tool. And so when the year started, we were worried that students really wouldn't engage in the program while they were at home. But this data indicates that they actually are engaging in it. And so we're, our goal is to have students complete one segment a month. And you'll see that at the district level, the average is 1.7, so they're exceeding that goal. We would like to see them, the average session length be between 15 to 25 minutes. That's a recommendation that comes out of the HMH, who is the vendor of this program. And so you'll see that our average is 20.8, which is right on target. And we would like them to complete one to two sessions per week, and our average is two. So we really are seeing that students are engaged in utilizing this program across the district. And then I think the next slide shows that same data by school so that you could see the level of student engagement. So this is very promising, because it indicates that once they take the assessment, which they probably have taken already, I think it's the last weekend, like probably Monday, Tuesday, they took those. That we're hopeful that we will see growth and positive results. So moving on to math, this data shows, again, the percent tested across the two years in Algebra I. So you'll see, like, in English, our percentage test, it was lower in 2020. Students did take this test at home. In both times, it was an online computer test, but in 2019, it was in class, and 2020, it was at home. The next slide shows you the percentage of students that were proficient on this assessment. So you'll see that there's a decrease in terms of the percentage proficient, but it's very, it's not as... Let's see, let's say that we were pleasantly surprised when we saw that, or not surprised, but we were encouraged, because it really shows that while students did not perform as well as they did in 2019, that their performance is very close to what they did the year before.
We were extremely encouraged by that. You're right.
This data breaks the performance by standard. And so again, like in English, we were looking for particular standards that maybe we thought students performed at a very low level, that maybe we needed to refocus and adjust our scope and sequence to target those in second quarter. And we didn't really see that happening. So if you look at all the standards across the board, there really isn't one that stands out as significantly low. Students tend to struggle with the same types of standards that they did in 2019. And then this data breaks student performance by ethnicity. And you can see the variations across the ethnic groups. So when you look across all three levels of math, you'll see we focused on Algebra I. But if you look at geometry, that percentage really went from 54 to 52. The one that we spent a lot of time talking to our department leads about was Algebra II, where you see a big increase in student performance. And so we talked to them about what they thought might have affected these results in this way. And so some of the things that they brought up is that they really focused their curriculum to really cover the essential of essential in this first quarter. They thought that the use of technology and having students do the formative assessments online really helped them when they completed this assessment, because it was also online. Desmos is the calculator that we use in our district-wide assessment, and it's the calculator, online calculator, that's used in the state-level assessments. So they really introduced more practice for students in the use of that calculator, and they felt that that contributed, because a large chunk of this test requires students to use that Desmos calculator. So all of those things, we believe, contributed to this increase in scores. This data shows the correlation between how the student did on the progress assessment and the grade that they received in the class. So you'll see that the correlation is a little bit stronger than it was in ELA. And all of these correlations were statistically significant. When we looked at who, the students that didn't participate in the assessment, what grades were they getting in their math class? You'll see that it's a similar finding to what we saw in English. The majority of students that didn't participate in the district progress assessment were receiving a D or an F in class, which again indicates that there's this group of students that's really not engaging with the curriculum, which leads to the lower grades that they're getting. So this data looks at a student's performance on the Algebra I as a ninth grader in 1920, and then how they did in geometry as a 10th grader. So this really just looks at their standing in terms of proficiency. The two tests are very different, and they're assessing a different, you know, different content area. But we wanted to see if you were proficient as a ninth grader, how are you doing now as a sophomore in the area of math? And so you'll see that, like in English, the majority of students maintain their status. So if they were proficient in algebra, they continued to be proficient in geometry. If they were not proficient in algebra as a ninth grader, they continue not to be proficient in geometry. We had about 15% of students increase their grade, their proficiency level, so they were not proficient in algebra, but became proficient in geometry. And about 16% of students that decreased, so they showed proficiency in algebra. And then now, as a sophomore, we're not proficient in geometry. So very similar trend to what we saw in English. The math support program that we have for students that need some additional scaffolding and assistance in order to be successful in algebra, and maybe more focus on some pre-algebra skills, is our math lab program. And in that class, students utilize Alex, which is a computer adaptive program that identifies the pre-algebra skills that students are missing and then provides targeted support and practice in those areas. So we see that we looked at data from August to September, and that's the blue bar. And then from September to November, that's the orange bar. And we looked at how students were progressing through their pre-algebra-defined lessons. And you can see that across all schools, they're making progress, which would lead them to, you know, be more prepared for the algebra curriculum.
Did you comment on that this is an adaptive program?
I did. So it's very student-driven. So a student takes an initial assessment. The program identifies the pre-algebra skills that the student is showing gaps and needs additional scaffolding and practice, and then produces a specialized learning plan for that student. So every student has a different learning plan depending on where they come into the program at what level.
And we purchased this particular program two years ago because it was able to assist in this adaptive manner for our students.
Yes, we listened, from the teacher feedback that we received, it was difficult to differentiate instruction to 20 to 25 students in the class. And so their recommendation was to find a program where they could have students engage and get targeted lessons, and then the teacher could monitor that and provide additional support if needed. And so that is what we, we found Alex. We talked to other districts and have found that they thought this program had a lot of potential and success. We talked to other districts and have found that they thought this program had a lot of potential and success.
So we started out virtually and we returned from fall break in a hybrid manner. So our goal here in this part of the presentation is to look at the number of failures, the struggles that kids are having in terms of of the Fs. We're going to review the progress reporting period because that's an ongoing process. As I've said now, probably three or four times, it's not something that we we just do once in a blue moon. This is something that our teachers and support teams are doing on an ongoing basis. And the Fs are not static at this time. There'll be a point where they are, but right now the Fs are going to be, it's very mobile. They were different a week ago, they were different two weeks ago. And so they won't be static because we will continue with the ongoing support and process that I'll talk about in a little bit. And as I mentioned, we are refocusing on the freshman graduating class of twenty four and our seniors graduating class of twenty one so that they maintain that trajectory of graduation. And while all of our core subject or subject areas, we're going to focus on for the presentation, English and math, as you've seen. But all our subjects are as priority. And then to look at the development and how we're approaching the student's success plans and what we're doing with that, how we're going to monitor that and how we're going to get kids out of these plans and 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 move on to success. And that's with monitor teams that I'll share in just a bit. Dr. Lexic.
So this data shows the percentage of X across all subject areas. So we didn't differentiate subjects, we just pulled all the data. So you could see the blue line shows you the percentage of Fs in quarter one in two thousand nineteen. And then the green line shows you this percentage of X in twenty twenty on quarter one grades. And then in this slide, we also pulled quarter two grades as of December seventh to to kind of give you more updated data. However, quarter two is not defined yet. And so these are this this data is still changing and teachers are working with students in in altering the quarter two grades. But as of December seventh, this was the percentage of X across all content areas.
And I want to just add that the we could be here for an entire day if we pulled a lot of this data to talk by grade by grade, school by school. A lot of that work is going to be happening at the sites and already is happening at the sites.
So this chart shows the percentage of Fs by content area. And so these are on grade level freshman, sophomore and junior English. So the the bottom, the blue line is two thousand nineteen quarter one. Orange is two twenty twenty quarter one, and then we added the twenty twenty quarter two data, which is still not the finalized data. So I when quarter two becomes finalized, then I think we'll potentially present quarter two data to you. So that's English. This is math, algebra one, geometry and algebra two. The percentage of Fs night in quarter one, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, and then the quarter two twenty twenty is that gray bar. This looks at science, so you see biology and integrated science. Integrated sciences is our freshman level course, and then biology is our sophomore level course in science. And then social studies, American Arizona history, economics, US Arizona government and world history and geography.
Thank you, Dr. Lexic. So let's talk about the interventions, you know, what are we doing and and what's already been done? We are aligning our struggling students, those students that we you've just seen in terms of the percentage of kids who are at this time receiving an F or they've not engaged. And so we're trying to get those students on campus for support. We've been doing that the entire semester, actually. We want to continue to identify the support, the social emotional support for their concerns that they may have. And as I mentioned, we presented with CARE seven, so we're it's an ongoing check with our kids when we discover or hear that that there are concerns. We bring in our counselors and CARE seven and family and a variety of caring adults to to help out with this. You know, I talked about trying to get kids on campus to 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 provide providing that individualized support that they need to to move on successfully. But as the health metrics worsened, fewer families and students were sending their students for this support, even in a small classroom environments. And so trying to encourage families to trust that when they enter our campuses, even at times like this, they are going to be safe. But the health metrics are 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 a data point that the public sees in a variety of formats, and we have families that are just very uncertain about sending their kids to to school or anywhere for that matter. We have it continued, and we will continue extending invitations by phone calls, texts, home visits. I mean, many of our schools are doing home visits to school to families to see, you know, what they can do to to bring kids back to school or to provide them the much needed support that that they may need at this time. And it I I want to applaud our support teams at the school sites. A multi-tiered system of support teams, they're doing a lot, and so are teachers in trying to get them to school. And again, we're going to continue this process of the interventions. It's ongoing. It's it. This isn't something you do in an isolated weekend or a couple of weeks. We will be intervening throughout quarter three, quarter four. And our summer education academy twenty one, this summer is going to look very, very different. All of our school sites will be providing some sort of support during summer education academy. So all seven sites will be open to make sure that we hone in on those students who may have lost out a little bit, and and we need to provide that that support so that they can get back on track. And some of those percentages can be overwhelming for our our sites. And so we we want to attend to every student's needs. But we can experience some immediate success potentially when we focus on that kid who may have have not engaged quite as much, but they're still anywhere between that thirty and fifty percent struggle. And if they just did X, Y, and Z, like, you know, make up a test or take it for the second or third time with some intervention, or they need to turn in an assignment, or whatever the intervention or circumstance that the teacher and the family and the student have agreed upon. We find that those students can easily turn that grade back into a passing or better. And that's the focus from here forward, actually. I talked earlier about the student's success plans, and that's something that our our teachers, along with our our support teams are working on. So that it's not just a plan you 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 write easily. You have to understand what, to some degree, what the student actually has missed because it may be a heavily weighted point on on a particular assignment or project that that's what's bringing them down. So let's build the plan around, you know, promoting and and developing those aspects of that assignment. It could be that they're doing well, and all they need to do is take the final. It could be that they're they've got assignments that they still have to be turned in. There's a variety of reasons why or what could be written and included into a student's success plan. And so that level of cooperation has to happen between the student, the family, and of course, the teacher and all the support arms that go around those plans. And those are the ones that we would be monitoring on a regular basis. But who's the person to monitor that? We've got to have a caring adult that could very likely will be the teacher. But it could be other support systems to monitor until that grade is turned into a passing or better. I mentioned the teacher and parent involvement is critical. And, you know, I I shared with you the challenge that we have getting kids on campus. And that is that's a big, big challenge because right now in this environment, many families are experiencing a lot of economic hardship. And so kids we find are actually working in many instances. I talked to one of our dropout prevention folks at one of our schools, and she made close to a hundred and twenty phone calls in a week and a half period time. And I would say she said about half of those kids were either working or they had kids or family members who were sick at home, or they were experiencing a loss in their families. And that's just at one site. So getting teachers and 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 our parents involved is critical. But, you know, real life happens today, and and it's just a very different unfortunate environment for a lot of people. Monitoring that student attendance, and that's one of the things that this teams track ongoing. If they see a pattern in students attendance, we're going to get on it. Those teams are making site visits, as I mentioned. I am looking at a winter intercession option, starting as early as next week and in the the middle week in between the Christmas and and New Year. And I'm proud to say that we've had schools that have a number of teachers that are are going to to work that. We've identified students. I know Corona has had a number of teachers that offered. We've identified students, and so have many of the other schools. So I'm I'm just thrilled with that. I will also go out and and help and provide my assistance. And I know my team will probably want to do a little bit of that, too, if they're able to. We're also going to be looking into the second semester for our Saturday and evening school options for students so that they can we can we can develop some those kids who are further behind, but we can look at credit recovery within our programs that might work a little bit better in that environment in the evening or on a Saturday. We talked about engagement, and I've been preaching that for now three years about making connections to students just in person. I mean, and it's even more so imperative that our that our teachers try to engage with their with their students online. And this has been the greatest challenge for teachers and for our students. This is not a typical way to learn. I know that our governing board knows that. It's a challenge, our teachers know that, and we are embracing it and trying to do the best that we can. We are providing new guidance on the use of our cameras, specific guidance for our students, specific guidance for our teachers, and some support recommendations from parents so that we can see this through. And one of the the nuances with the use of cameras from students is that, you know, some are just not comfortable in being in front of a camera. Some are they've slept in late and they have bed head, and I've used that is an example, but it's the truth. You know, or they're just embarrassed for whatever reason, they're just not comfortable. So we we have some very effective strategies that I'm going to share around how to do that and and the the teachers to embrace those changes and then hopefully solicit the support from our parents that it's okay to turn those cameras on. And then share proven strategies to provide more encouragement for increased student engagement. I'm going to share those in in the next slides as well. You know, our teachers mentioned this a couple, about a month or so ago, about ghost students. And and that's a term that's used for those students who are signing in. But then we don't see them after they sign in. And so the the data is saying they're struggling, they're not doing well, they're they're likely getting an F. And so reaching out to those students and trying to get them to be a part of of the program, the school, and and get them back and 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 start getting them involved. But we've got to find out where they are. You'd be surprised how many of our families have moved out of necessity or need or loss. And so the numbers that we have on file may not necessarily be accurate numbers. And so this is this is an evolving challenge for for every school team. And then I have asked for our teachers and and to create situations of hope for their students. So if they if they have just a semblance of hope that that, yeah, I can do this and I can pass this class. And then they know that their teachers care about them and want them to succeed. You know, they're going to they're going to strive and and reach to that end to make that happen for their teachers. Talked about encouraging engagement and phrases to consider. And Dr. Gonzalez was very nice in gathering this along with some other material. But I wanted to give you this as an example. You know, our words do matter. I mean, I've said that before, but even more so right now in a virtual setting like this with our teachers. The words have huge impact on our students, but we want to make it personal. I mean, as an example, seeing your faces helped me to eat to teach you better. I can see when you get it and when you are not. So it allows that that teacher to, you know, offer support and assistance when you see on the student's face that they are struggling. We don't want to be punitive in any way. And so it's easy to go there, you know, because you want to move on with the lesson. But kids are are struggling enough, so we want to avoid punishment. But make it fun. I mean, I was thrilled walking in classes a couple of weeks ago when kids were there and seeing kids on on the screen. You know, there's just a lot of things that we can implement to to help our students feel more engaged. I mentioned bed head. Well, that's that's real. I mean, and tomorrow will be a spirit day to show off your bed head. I mean, there's so many ways in which we can engage our students. And so this information is going to be shared, if it hasn't already, shared with our teachers and our support teams so that we begin using these. And then I have asked or instructed our department leaders and our our content specialists when they're out and about to observe this in the the actual taking place in our schools when we begin later on. So next steps, because I know we have just so much time for questions, and I want to make sure we get to some of yours. Our priority is to get to our most struggling students for school support. And I mentioned the struggles that we've had with that, but we will be tenacious, and we're going to continue reaching out to our students and our families. And if we have to find out, find a new location because they're no longer at that address or at that phone number, then we're going to we're going to track them down. Quarter two, as Dr. Lexic mentioned, quarter two assessments will be ending on Friday. And so teachers will be providing and confirming their grades. And then we will have for at least a short period of time, a static grade. I mentioned the student support plans. And why say they become unstatic, if you will, is that within those plans, if a student received an F, there's a plan that'll be written, and then therefore that 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 F can turn into a passing grade sometime in January. And per our policy, the students have up until the entire second semester to remedy that grade to a passing or better. So and we're going to be, like I said, very tenacious to that end to make sure that our students did not fall between the cracks, and we 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 got them the support that they needed. With the quarter two static data, as I mentioned, just to continue to analyze the F rates and hopefully with with some of the support systems and plans that we have in place through evening and Saturday school opportunities, those numbers will go down. Question was asked by a very thoughtful board member, and that is about interventions, you know, and what are we going to do? What are we going to monitor them? How are we going to make sure that we're we're reaching them and that we're actually making that difference where we see through the completion of those student's success plans for that student? And then that grade is actually turned into a passing grade or better. Now, we are going to take a snapshot come the end of this semester on Friday. And that will be the static grade that we draw from as we move forward in the development and the monitoring of the student's success plans. Because as we move through the third quarter, I'm hoping that that number, those numbers or that static number that we'll get on Friday will go down because we're going to continue to monitor that. And we want to continue to equip teachers with proven strategies to increase engagement. I've mentioned this before, engagement, engagement, engagement. This is something that our teachers have said, if they just flip their cameras on, then they listen and we have from first quarter, those students who were engaged and who participated online, virtually. online virtually, they did well. They 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 were able to learn and we have the data to support that. But when kids don't engage and, you know, they 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 get distracted or whatever, our students are far more resilient than we give them credit. But engagement, that's what we're trying to help our teachers and our students. Oops, hang on. And then lastly, on that last bullet, if that's done, but to can you continue the review of grading practices and movement towards standards-based grading? We saw the the growth in test scores in Algebra II, I believe. Dr. Lexic, tell me if I'm wrong. If I'm, but and we mentioned that we asked, okay, how, why was there such a noticeable improvement? And that was because those Algebra II teams had come together and really honed in on the essential standards and performance objectives. So they had fine tuned their curriculum, their 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 teaching. And I'm just thrilled because I, we have a solid example that if teams work together in that manner and they're focused with pertinent, meaningful curriculum and stay focused with that, our students. There's a lot here, Governing Board, and I appreciate you that you have allowed me to share this information. But again, this is entire process of monitoring students is going to be ongoing, ongoing from now till the end of the summer. And we'll have some, we will be reporting out periodically. So with that, I'm going to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Mendeville. We're going to open up the questions for our governing board. Governing Board members, please raise your hand on the icon, on the icon with the icons. I can see you. We're going to do one question per for governing board member. Then we move to the next one so we can get everybody in. We do have a hard stop at 6:45. So it looks like I have my first question and it is Mrs. Lau.
Wow, I was fast, huh? Hey, Dr. Alexic and Dr. Mendeville, thank you so much for breaking this down. And I had looked at this prior to this and I didn't understand some of the slides. And you made it very clear to me, so I appreciate that very much. I have a question on how are we involving the parents or the families of the kids that are getting Fs? Have you, have the schools contacted these parents already or will they be contacted? So they're in the loop and they know what's happening with their kids.
Great question, Board Member Lau. I have a couple principals that I've invited. Who wants to answer that? Or at least that one? Oh, I see Ms. Banks.
Yes, I can.
How about you both do? Tamika, why don't you begin? Principal Banks, why don't you start first? And then Principal Cleve, would you mind going afterwards?
So to, for our families, we have done a variety of ways to contact. We found that texting works the best. So we are putting together a program for after break called COVID catch up to help our students who are currently failing. And we will be reaching out to those families via email, text and phone with my MTSS team. They'll be giving phone calls. I have made a few phone calls myself to talk to families this past quarter just to share with, hey, your kid's doing great. Or, yeah, we're on the struggle bus and we need some help from you. So we are diligently working to make sure we've got that that line of communication. But like I said, texting has worked, at least for my families. It has worked really well and parents get back to us within a few minutes. Between 15 and 30 minutes, I have an answer from a family.
So are you?
You know what?
Are you, are you able to contact 100% of the kids that are receiving Fs or most of them anyways?
We have been able to reach most. We have not, I would not say 100%. What we're finding is phones, numbers are disconnected. They have moved. We don't have contact information. That's why we've been using the texting because that has worked. But we have been able to reach out to quite a few. I would say more than half majority of my families that are, the kids are failing.
Thanks.
Can I comment on that before Principal Cleve? Because Board Member Lau, that's a great question. One of the other pieces that I have asked sites to do is to organize their calls, their texts by kid and who's made the the contact and what what they're working on. And so keeping a log, basically, spreadsheets, each of the schools have that, which I'm extraordinarily impressed with. And they, they, each of them, because it's it's in Google Docs, they visit these sites regularly. Correct me if I'm wrong, principals, but I've seen some of the the comments and the work that you've done on all those. So they are, they're doing a lot. Principal Cleve?
Yeah. Governing Board, Lau, I kind of want to join in in what Tamika is saying because a lot of the same processes that are probably going on at Mountain Point are going across a lot of the campuses. But to further that, counselors are involved in going through their caseload and reaching out to students. There's always consistent communication, at least from our dean of students. They have a team in which, you know, Dr. Mendel alluded, a lot of phone calls and visits. We're also doing a lot of home visits to try to reach out to families that may have trouble coming onto campus or providing resources. We've had a lot of luck really through, you know, even Google meets or our counselors are doing Google meets, trying to to reach kids and have individual conversations and doing Google meet tutoring sessions on Wednesdays, broken down by content. And so like if English is from eight to nine, social studies is nine to 10. So there's not never any overlapping. So a kid can always pop into the content that they need help with. So in terms of communication, I wouldn't say, yeah, I would say most parents or most students know in terms of what they're struggling with or how they're struggling. The next step is, you know, finding that intervention that clicks with that kid in the virtual environment.
Thank you.
And Dr. Mendeville and Mrs. Lau, I can jump in as well. Just to reiterate what Tamika and Mr. Cleve said, I think that's part of what the teachers are doing on a daily basis is reaching out and contacting parents. And then the different levels of support go from there to help reach out and communicate with the families that the teachers maybe can't get to or they're not getting responses from. And so it's an ongoing process that I think at each campus, that system looks similar. But we know that it's so important to make contact with those parents so that they can be part of this process and be part of the support.
Thank, thank you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, Board Member Helm is next. But would you mind if I tagged on to Board Member Lau's question? Thank you. My question is an add on to what Board Member Lau was talking about with the, with the, with the process of the Ds and Fs. Do you guys as principals have thought about maybe doing a peer mentoring per with like, like Google Web for students who are like, are in the A process versus the ones who are not doing so well in classes? That also kind of kills two birds with one stone because I know a lot of kids are saying they're not getting enough time with their friends. Maybe set up like a peer mentoring? Is that, because I know we do it when we're in person. But is anything set up virtually that they can have like a peer mentoring through classes? I just want to ask each principal that.
Yeah, President Ha, that's a great question. At Corona, I can speak specifically Corona. We run our peer tutoring through National Honor Society and that is still taking place. So kids can sign up and get partnered up and it is virtual. So that is is an option and and that that works for a lot of kids, you know, just talking to their peer and having simple questions or or having that. You're right, there's more than just academic support. There's also that peer-to-peer social interaction that's that is positive.
At Mercos, we have, you know, when we have students on campus, we have a homework lab where we do peer tutoring. But we're actually partnering with Desert Vista because they have an established peer tutoring program that they're working virtually. So we're partnering with Desert Vista starting third quarter so that our students can work with their peer tutoring program and get support that they need. So we're excited about that.
And I think on our campus, I believe our NHS is working also with Desert Vista's peer tutoring to partner with kids to get that up and running. If it's not solid right now, it will be by third quarter because we've been exploring some options with peer tutoring as well.
Oh, sorry. Thank you so much for the answer, Board Member Helm.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Dr. Mendeville and Dr. Lexic. Very good information. And though it was not surprising, I think we're all aware that numbers aren't where we'd like them to be. These are different times and Dr. Mendeville listed a lot of that information. I really like your winter intercession, your Saturday and evening options that you've presented. I hope that you will look at a spring intercession. I think that might be valuable. My question is for our principals. Truly, all those intercessions and evening and Saturday schools only work if our teachers are willing to step forward to do it. So I'd like to hear from our principals since the winter intercession is coming up very quickly. How many teachers are they getting to step forward and participate?
I can go ahead and start with that. Board Member Helm, number one, we offered that as an option. It wasn't a mandatory for any teachers because we also have to be mindful of their break and time with family and time to recharge. And the same with students. It'll be optional for students. You know, some students have prior commitments, maybe traveling to see family or just spending time with their family. So it's, number one, it's 100% optional. And so we we put that out there. We have 15 teachers at Corona. That's across all, that's not just your cores. We also have electives. And so we're going to run, we actually have a meeting tomorrow afternoon. We're going to run the numbers and our our intercession is designed for kids that were close, maybe that 50% or higher, that within, you know, six days of work can redo, maybe retake a test or redo a project or turn something in they hadn't done and be able to get to a passing grade. So intercessions are very targeted for a specific group. Some of those other kids that may be a little further, maybe they're getting an incomplete or opportunity in January where there's more time for them to to make up. And also, we're going to look at doing some turnaround classes, especially at the math level in which kids will retake semester one because they might need to be a little further behind and need that reinforcement. So 15 teachers on our campus, we're hoping to get around 100 to 150 kids for six days in December to get, for those that are wanting to take that opportunity to get caught up.
Other teachers? Their schools?
I can go next. We have, in talking with our counseling department and our MTSS team, determined some other ways that we're going to focus on recouping credit for these students that are struggling. We know that our students need a break and we know that our teachers have been working so hard. And we have some plans that we're looking at using our ACT Lab when we come back to really focus on those students who are earning incompletes, on having labs on our campus for our seniors and our freshmen who need to recoup credit. So we want to be able to offer those opportunities because we think that those will be most meaningful and that our students will be able to have a break and come back and focus on getting back to where they need to go. And that, you know, I think the winter intercession will be will be really useful for some students. But I think that we have some other things that we're focusing on that we think will be more beneficial for our campus and that will allow students to recoup credit.
Mrs. Ben? Yes, ma'am. And I'm going to piggyback on what Sarah said. We did a pretty good in-depth analysis on our campus and looked. And this is where our COVID catch up idea came from, where we will, we've built a Schoology course where we're loading essential assignments from first semester. We are going to pull those kids, we're going to run grades on Friday once the grades close and find out who are kids, which kids are really close and then offer them a chance to make that grade up when we return, starting our start date. Our targeted start date right now is Monday, I believe it's January 11th. And I have currently eight teachers involved in that COVID catch up. And they're excited and gung ho and ready. And we have basically two from every of the major core areas. We're going to use the first week back to contact families of those students and explain to them what's going on and what we're offering their student. And then we will finish, hopefully, by President's Day as our deadline to have all those students wrapped up to figure out if they can pass and get that, earn their, recoup their credit.
Thank you. It sounds like you're all doing a tremendous job in your schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to piggyback on what Ms. Helm said, that thank you so much to each principal who's gave that information. And thanks to all the teachers who are taking up their Christmas time to help kids catch up. So thank you so much on that. And it looks like we have Board Member Barazza with the question.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to be as brief as possible. And any responses from the principals, if you can just contact me or make that available to the community, the answers to those. I just want to be brief. I know the community, I know our board has a lot of questions and I want to try and make it as as far as we could. First off, Majah, thank you for your presentation. And please convey the thanks to everyone involved in not only the presentation, but all the hard work. You know, it's, it's a difficult time. We're really having to re-line a lot and really kind of figure it out on the go. So really convey my appreciation. Thank you. And ultimately, the data is going to give a lot of feedback for us in the future. So I appreciate that. I guess I'm not sure who to ask these questions to because, you know, you can ask them to the principal. We can ask them to those that are conveying the study. Ultimately, really, if I'm going to try and to break down all my questions into one, I think students are suffering, teachers are overwhelmed. The situation with clarification of what is required from us from the state is not exactly there. So what I think ultimately as a student, the perspective as maybe, you know, like as a teen parent that was trying to catch up, I had someone, I had a counselor ultimately that gave me, you know, clarity, a roadmap. And I think teachers need a roadmap. I think we all need that roadmap. The students need a roadmap for achievement. And I think we have a lot of options. Ultimately, I, how can we convey to each student? Is it going to take each counselor to have to go in and identify each student along with the teachers and figure out that roadmap? Because when I was a student, teen parent, that was more than a year behind when I was a senior, a lot of what we're talking about was the fundamental things that made a change to me. I took advantage of night school. I took advantage of zero hour. I took advantage of online learning at the time, which was really not that well developed. But and it was, I had to seek transferable credit. So ultimately, though, nonetheless, I had a roadmap. And for me, it just was about, if I wanted to walk, this is what I need to do. Can we give some form of that clarity or how do we do that? Majah, I think we, you know, if I could start with you, how do we provide that clarity since you talked to all the schools in the district?
Well, I'm actually going to defer to the principals because I think they each have created ways and individualized plan for their students. So I'm gonna let them speak to that.
And really quick, I understand it's all about the student success plan. And I greatly appreciate that, you know, because again, as a teen parent, it was tough trying to figure out, is it even worth it? And, you know, can I even catch up? And, you know, it, just knowing I had that ability. So I guess really, can we, can I hear more from the principals about that student success plan and how?
Yeah, we're, we're going to do that. But remember.
We're gonna do that. But remember I talked about um, that glimmer of hope? We want to create that, that glimmer of hope for our kids. And, and I've talked to our principals about that and the teams about that. So uh, guys, why don't you share a little bit of that with what you know right now and what we're trying to accomplish?
Sorry Nate, did you want to go?
No, go ahead, Ms. Tolar.
Okay. Um, well, we've talked a lot about our seniors, um, because they have come to us in all different circumstances. Some of them are coming to us um, before the start of this year and um, we're credit deficient. Some of them because of this experience, because of their circumstances, it's been really hard for them. And they're gonna find themselves in a situation at the end of the semester where they may be credit deficient. And so we realized, you know, we need to get this information out to those students and their parents. And we need to present them with their options so that we can create a plan for them and that needs to happen immediately. Um, so we created a presentation, our admin team, our intervention team and our counseling department leader. Talking about um, you know, where they are, those groups of students, the graduation requirements and the options that they have for credit recovery, which um, you know, is a small list. They have credit recovery, they have, um, they could receive incompletes and they make those up. Um, and you know, so we presented those options. We, like I said, we created a presentation, we had our list of students who either are credit deficient, seniors who are credit deficient or, or potentially maybe after this semester. And we sent the presentation out to those students and families. So they had all the information, they could watch it together with their parents. And then send a link for them to make an appointment with their counselor so that we could create a plan for them. And so um, you know, we've seen success with students and families watching those. Um, they're now reaching out to their counselors and we're working through counselors are proactive in reaching back out to families or we're having our interventionists reach out to those families that we haven't heard from. So that we ensure that we have a plan for each of those seniors as we get started with second semester because time is of the essence with those guys.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, you know, um, that, that says a lot. I appreciate that.
And I just, just to add a few things, Board Member Barazza, that's where our counselors are so vital. They run credit checks at the end of each semester. Um, so they know exactly where their, their kids are in terms of being on track, off track. So they can make those adjustments in the schedule. And that, not, that's not just right now. They like for seniors, they met with our, our seniors at the end of their junior year to select courses. Let them know, hey, what courses do you need to take to make sure you're on track for graduation? Um, and give them that roadmap, what you're talking about before their senior year. And then they'll do that, that checkup again after finals on Friday, they'll run that credit check to see our kids, are their seniors on track? Are they off track? Um, and get them in the appropriate class to, to make sure they have that opportunity to graduate in May with their peers. So there's a lot of communication between student and counselor and, and parents. That's, that's ongoing. And, and realistically, that starts with the four-year plan at their freshman level. But more, it's more urgent right now, obviously, for a senior with one semester left.
And to piggyback on to that, um, we do the same thing. Uh, but we even hold a meeting in the spring for our freshman and sophomore parents. We'll hold it probably mid to late February, right before summer school information drops. And we um, call it basically you, you didn't, you didn't get all your credits. So what do I do now? And we really talk through with parents, we have, we invite them in um, and really share with them, like, these are your options. Summer school information is forthcoming. This is what they need to do to stay on track. We have a counselor that evening, we run it through Title I. Um, and we've done it the last couple of years and it's been pretty um, beneficial for some families.
Thank you. I, I greatly appreciate all the efforts. Uh, ultimately, I think, uh, you know, giving students options that can work for them um, is where we need to be focused and also aligned with, obviously, uh, what we need to achieve in terms of making sure our, our education is accredited, you know. So um, if you can just uh, well, I'm not gonna ask any more questions. But if you just uh, you know, like if teachers are out there listening, um, you know, and um, try to uh, reach out to your principals um, with ideas and projects. I love the idea of hope. I love the student success plans. Um, I think the one thing missing is we gotta do projects that uh, remind students that next year we can put these in play. You know, al- almost like uh, preemptively preparing for the next year for those that can um, that are, will be here for the next year. And the seniors that are gonna be here, making sure that uh, their experience here for the remainder of the time is uh, not only meaningful but um, inspiring. I, I really want and really encourage all of you to uh, do really out of the box ideas. Um, I think really this is the time where we, we gotta flex that type of muscle. And also all the projects you guys are putting in place and all the um, ways to grab students. I think we real, we really need to look at it um, in terms of that's gonna be how we can implement and create the new model for grabbing students. Night school, online, um, you know, the various uh, um, self-paced and uh, um, testing out, all of those really did help me to be able to achieve my credits. Again, going into my senior year, I was more than a year behind on my senior year. So I had to do two years.
I apologize, Mr. Barazza. I apologize, but for us, for time, we gotta just keep going with questions.
Okay. Yeah, I understand.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Vice President Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President. And uh, thank you, Dr. Alexic, Dr. Mendeville, teaching learning, our teachers. So our support staff, our admin and our principals for really digging in and getting creative during such difficult times. Um, you know, it's, it's clear you have all put significant amount of time um, and talent into making sure our students are successful. So thank you for, for all of your work. Um, obviously, my main concern is for our freshmen and our seniors. Uh, because of obviously the freshmen having, establishing their foundation and the seniors wrapping up their high school experience and going off um, into college, military, um, you know, working, et cetera. Uh, but also for our sophomores and juniors, but I, I understand we have um, some time to help them. Um, with um, the presentation talking about obviously the compounded impact of what had this pandemic has brought to uh, families across the district. Um, especially for those students that, and families that had been suffering prior to the pandemic. Um, coupled with our social and martial support with CARE seven. I'm filed ready when we are looking distinctly at our standard population, our honors, AP gifted population and then our sped population. Um, because obviously uh, how we differentiate up and down normally in, in, in the academic classroom. But I'm, I'm curious as to what you have found most successful for the, the three distinct groups uh, so far. And any insights you might have as well. Principals?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and get started on there. Uh, Board Member Garcia, I think that in terms of instruction, what, what, what has been success? And it's not just in the virtual environment, it's also in class environment. It's teachers that can engage students and keep kids interested um, in the lesson and, and feeling confident in their work. Um, and having that, um, having each kid feel successful where they're, they're really have that, you know, positive self-esteem about uh, the course and, and feeling confident uh, within that class. So I don't think that changes from the virtual into the regular environment. It's a little, it can be a little more challenging with the virtual environment in terms of, you know, teacher skill level with technology and, and, and being introduced um, uh, to the new stuff that's being offered. One great strategy we've, we've found successful and a lot of that um, with our ed techs and our, even our content specialist, um, NearPod, it's a program that teachers can just help. It takes their current lesson and kind of allows it to be um, used virtually and, and which more, more engaging where you can build in questions, you can build in, you know, PowerPoints. You can build in that video where you can chunk your lessons for students um, and give opportunities for them to um, give real feedback uh, real time. So a teacher can see that, pause the lesson and then re-teach um, or move forward. So, and make that decision real time. So I would say that's been a great strategy. It's uh, we've had some um, professional development opportunities with our ed tech the last three or four weeks with NearPod. And I think that's only gonna get better, but um, that's been a really successful strategy for us.
And um, I will just piggyback off of what Mr. Cleve said. I don't know that, that we see the necessity for different strategies for those three different groups um, that you referenced, Mr. Garcia. Uh, I think it's about building relationships. And I think we saw that in person and we see the need even more for it um, virtually. That our kids respond to the staff members that they have relationships with. Whether they are super high achieving or um, you know, they need ac- additional academic support. And so our teachers are working exceptionally hard at um, finding different ways to build those relationships through this. I think that it helped when we, we, we went to hybrid for that period of time that they got to see them. Um, and they, and then when we went back virtual, they had a different relationship with them. And so I think that that was helpful. But I, I also think, um, and I was gonna mention NearPod as well, that that has been an incredible tool for our teachers. It allows them to give real-time feedback so that even though they're not in the same physical environment, they can see what their students are doing. And they can provide that real-time feedback and that, that's beneficial at any level. Um, so you know, I think that they are learning and um, adapting to the technology with new instructional strategies. But I think it all goes back to building relationships with kids.
I have to agree as well. It is definitely the relationship piece. Um, the ones that have, folks that have the most success have built, built those relationships with their students. They can get them to have the cameras on, they're having those engaging conversations. Um, some other things I've seen that have worked, um, we really took a li- a work, a look at our late work policy and how that impacts students. Um, and we really um, were, I met with my instructional cabinet and they came up with a late work policy. Um, and they've been taking late work. They um, have not taken off as much as a penalty. We've decided as a school that it would be only a ten percent deduction once the unit is done as opposed to half or twenty percent. Um, we went with ten percent. That has worked really well, um, students, um, and then retaking. I'm gonna be honest, um, letting, allowing students to retake an exam um, has helped tremendously. Um, because it does give them that hope and that confidence. Um, just because I bombed it, there's nothing, if you think about it, there's really nothing in life we don't get to retake, right? So why do we do it to kids? So um, offering that to them um, has worked out tremendously well. Um, and I think we, we, we're seeing some difference now. Of course, we wait till the eleventh hour to do some of those retakes, but we're doing them. So that's, that is a half the battle. So.
Well said, all three of you. Yeah, thank you all so much. That is uh, very, very helpful and helps illustrate, you know, um, not only the work that you're doing, but also, you know, the true impact on our students and the importance of those relationships. And then really quick, I just wanted to um, uh, you know, to say thank you for uh, some of the things that you've been working on. I, I love the COVID catch-up. Um, it's catchy pill. So you know, brings the reality of that, to that. Uh, but as well Tolar, working with DB and, and Marco, uh, from Marcos and as well as um, Principal Banks. Their um, uh, late work policy, adapting the technology that adapts. And then uh, just, you know, all three of you, um, and Principal Cleve working to really, you know, hone in on, on all of our students. Um, I have a ton of notes and a ton of thoughts, but I'm just grateful for all of you. Um, thanks for all you, everything you do.
Thank, thank you so much, Vice President Garcia. Uh, we look like we're at six thirty-eight and we can have one more question. And I'm gonna give it to either Board Member Helm or Board Member Lau because they won't get a chance to ask those questions again. So I'm gonna give both of them a chance to ask their last question before we end our study session. So I'll start off with Board Member Helm and then I'll go to Board Member Lau.
All right, I didn't mean to take time pushing a button. My question is for Dr. Mendeville and I'll try to ask very quickly. After the pandemic is order over, I believe we're still going to be in an economic crisis. You talked about students working, et cetera. They're taking care of their kids while other parents are working that haven't before. Evening school may be their only option. Are you ready to hire extra teachers for your evening school programs? Because if a teacher's taught all day, they may not want to go and teach part of the night.
Well, thank you, Board Member Helm, for that difficult question. Actually, it's something that we have been thinking about and I, I don't know that it would require um, hiring someone new. I can't hear. Uh, but it might be that we look at shifting that teacher's day. Because, you know, um, in a secondary high school system, we're dealing in pieces, the, the pieces of classes. And so if we have a student base that needs assistance and it's gonna be taking the shape of uh, uh, fifteen kids in the evening for English, maybe we can shift that teacher's day a little bit differently. So um, and that's where Dr. Keller and, and others will put their minds together to make sure it works. And quite frankly, if we have to hire someone for a short period of time, we have through Title um, resources to be able to do that as well. So I'm confident we will come up with some successful ways in which we can meet those needs for students. But that's a great question.
Thank you, Board Member Helm. Board Member Lau?
So we could talk about this for many hours, but what I want to say is I have great faith in you, the principals that are here tonight and those that aren't, along with Dr. Mendeville and his staff and our teachers, our academic interventionists, our counselors and our CARE seven, that you all will pull together and do everything you can to make sure that our kids get what they need to be successful. I love you all and I, Tempe Union is very lucky to have all of you because you are working long hours. You're exhausted beyond words and um, the community should be able, it's too bad they can't see everything that you're doing because I know they appreciate you too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you so much for those words, um, Board Member Lau.
I just want to thank everybody too, just before we conclude. Uh, Board Members, you had great questions and I want to just reiterate, uh, Andres, if you have additional questions along that, just let me know. And then I'll, we can talk through some of them, but we can also make sure that everyone gets the benefit of those answers to your questions. And same thing for all of you. If you have questions, just make sure you get them to me. And I, I will tell you, it would be my recommendation for the next board that we revisit uh, this sometime in late January. I imagine you're gonna want to do that. We will have some additional data to share at that time. And hopefully, uh, we'll have some favorable uh, outcomes, some, some bits of hope for our students that we can share, okay?
Well, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Mendeville. Thank you so much to uh, Principal Banks, Principal Tyler and Principal uh, and our Principal Elec over here, um, Representative, Principal Cleve. So thank you so much for your time. Um, thank everybody for their questions. Board Members, if we, I know we didn't get a chance to get a lot of questions in. Um, please email Dr. Mendeville so he can give us all the information that we get together. So at this time, um, I want to conclude our study session. We're gonna take a fifteen-minute break so we can get our, give our chance for our IT department to reset back for our board meeting. Uh, we will reconvene at seven PM. Thank you, everyone who was listening. And you guys have, if you want to stay on for the meeting, we'll be back at seven. Everybody else have a wonderful night.